Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining East Point Planning and Zoning. I am Patricia Lovett, Chair. At this time, we will ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. At this time, we will just ask you to pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. Director Smith, roll call, please.
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioner Presley?
Present.
Commissioner Miller?
Present.
Commissioner Watson?
Present.
Commissioner Fields?
Let me check which feels.
Commissioner Mark Fields? Commissioner Lovett?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. At this moment, we will ask for a-
Excuse me, Madam Chair, one second. We need her to call everyone that's here for the record.
I'm sorry.
Can we, I'm gonna have-
I'll start over.
She's gonna start over with the roll call to make sure everyone is called.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mark Fields. Commissioner Melanie Stiles. Commissioner Watkins, Watson. Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Presley.
Present.
Commissioner Eleanor Anderson.
Present.
Commissioner Joseph Fields.
Here.
Commissioner Keisha Chapman.
Present.
Commissioner Lovett?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask for a motion to adjourn for executive session.
Madam Chair.
I'm seeking.
I make a motion that we adjourn for executive session.
Commissioner Watson, thank you. We will now adjourn for executive session. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we did. I'm sorry. Can we get a vote on that, please? All of those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hearing none. We will go into executive session.
Madam Chair. Make a motion that we come out of the executive session and go into the regular meeting.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the commissioners come back into session now after having been in the executive session. All of those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hearing none. We're back into session.
Looks like the next item on the agenda is your old business and the case number one.
Director Smith, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, we are ready to go into the first case, old business.
Yes, in reference to old business, item number one, case number, city-initiated text amendment. Applicant, City of East Point. Property is located at Citywide. This text amendment of section 10-2071 Medical Institutional Zoning District, classification to streamline the scope and intent of the Medical Institutional Zoning District to provide for amended purposes and uses within the permitted use section of the code. Case type is a text amendment. In reference to this item-
Attorney Wiggins, do we need to go through the entire list of changes that was made to that one? Or do we, because we'll vote on that.
Yes, we'll vote on that. And that's only if your board needs that before they vote. It is the motion to adopt the text amendment as written, providing you guys have all the copy and veritied. But if there are any changes you want to make, then the motion would need to include those changes.
Director Smith, can we see a, what has, what we're voting on tonight?
So, Madam Chair, it's understanding that because it's on for a public hearing, go ahead and get a motion to open the public hearing. You'll hear from the public, well, you'll hear from staff to make their presentation on it because they're the applicant once you open the public hearing. And then I'll revisit your question once we close the public hearing.
Thank you. So I do need a motion to open the public hearing.
Madam Chair, motion to open the public hearing.
Do I have a second? It has been moved and properly seconded that we open the public hearing on case number one, city-initiated text amendment. All of those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hearing none. The case is now open for the City of East Point, text amendment.
Some of you have to turn off your mics so hers can work. It should be not rated.
Not rated. Good evening, everyone. In reference to this city-initiated, this city-initiated text amendment for the, for section 10-2071 Medical Institutional, we've had multiple conversations and discussions in reference to this and what the intent of this text amendment is. However, staff at this time is needing more time to go over the draft, to work with the legal department. And so at this time, we're recommending that this item be deferred.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, if anyone else wants to speak on this item, we are in public.
Do we have anyone in the audience that wants to come before us to speak for or against this particular item? Anyone for or against? I do not see anyone, so we can go ahead and get a motion to close the public hearing on the text amendment.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we close the public hearing on the city-initiated text amendment number one. All of those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Director Smith, item number two.
Well, let's make the staff recommendation and then a motion to-
Director Smith, recommendation on number one.
Yes, in reference to this item number one, for Citywide text amendment, staff recommends a deferral.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have on the floor from Director Smith, a deferral on item number one. What do I hear?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we accept staff's recommendation to defer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we defer at the request of staff, item number one, city-initiated text amendment. All of those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hearing none. The item will be deferred. Thank you. Are we ready for item number two? Director Smith?
Yes, in reference to old business, item number two, city-initiated text amendment. City of East Point is the applicant, and it is Citywide. This text amendment in reference to section 10-2206, public notification for the purpose of streamline and providing for a higher level effort to provide outreach and public notice to the broader community. This case type is a text amendment.
Thank you. Do we need to open?
Make a, I make a motion, will we open the public hearing?
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we open the public hearing or hear from staff on item number two, city-initiated text amendment. All of those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hearing none. Hearing none, the, we're open now for number two, city-initiated text amendment.
Yes, Madam Chair, in reference to item number two, city-initiated text amendment, in reference to section 10-20, 10-2206, staff is also recommending that we have the opportunity to work further on it, on the draft. We're not ready for, to move forward for your action, and we would like to defer.
Thank you. Do we have anyone that wants to come forward to have any discussion on city-initiated text amendment number two?
Yes, Madam-
Anyone wants to come forward?
Yes, I just wanted to-
This is the public's-
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry?
You're one of your workers, you might speak, but this is the public's topic.
Thank you. Yes, this is for the public to come forward. Hearing none, seeing none. We can have a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, I'm, I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that we close the public hearing on item number two, city-initiated text amendment. All of those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hearing none. The public hearing is closed on item number two, city-initiated text amendment. All of those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
So now, if you can draw for a motion to defer and see, and open up a discussion when they go into court, we would ask, something's-
Okay, we are now open for motion to defer on item number two. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we defer item number two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we defer item number two, city-initiated text amendment. All of those in favor? Okay, we can have discussion now, open discussion. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, I was wondering, as opposed to that amendment that we're working on, is there, I make a motion to expand the communication, making it scalable to Citywide versus one mile, depending, depending on the nature of the case or the impact, whether it will be impacted in a community, small, like a neighborhood, versus a Citywide impact. So maybe the communication can be more broad, depending on the scale of the-
So Commissioner Chapman, that would be a motion, but you were saying that you want staff to consider that-
Yes.
In their rewrite of the draft.
Yes.
And so when it comes back, hopefully you see it. And if you don't, obviously, you can make the motion at that time, where the draft be accepted with those changes.
Okay.
And so I think this has hurt, hurt you, but the motion right now, before it is to defer.
Yes.
And they take note of what your recommendation is toward that draft when it comes back.
Okay, thank you.
So is it my understanding, Attorney Wiggins, that we will entertain additions to this amendment, but we just really need to close out?
So it's, you don't kind of send it to the motion to defer, not at this time. The motion to defer is just, just that. What Commissioner Chapman is saying is that she would like to see language when it comes back, and there is discussion about it, to include some additional mileage or coverage for a public notification. And so the only thing you need to do now is see if there's any other discussion, and then get a vote, a yea or nay, on the motion to defer.
Okay. Are there, does any, any of the other commissioners have further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Can we get a motion to?
We already have one, so all those in favor.
Okay, to defer. All of those in favor to defer item number two, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hearing none. The item is to be deferred. And now we can entertain the addition to the amendment.
Now, we're going to have, we need the public hearing rules for the new business, so that if we vote number 22 on the new business, you're still open.
So what happened with Commissioner Chapman's request?
Staff will bring back the draft and ask for it that day.
So Director Smith will just pick that up. Okay. Commissioners, can I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing? Okay, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Chapman. Reading the rules for public hearing, persons both favoring and opposing the proposed case will be provided an opportunity to address the commission. The applicant for the zoning case or the applicant's designated representative, if any, will be entitled to speak first, followed by other speakers in favor of the proposal for a total of 15 minutes. Those who oppose the proposed zone, zoning case will then be permitted to speak for a total of 15 minutes. My, by majority vote, the commission may increase the total time of speakers, provided that each side is given the same amount of time. If there is more than one speaker for a side, the chair or the presiding officer may limit the time allotted to each individual speaker other than the zoning applicant. The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of his or her allotted time for rebuttal. Speakers must adhere to the rules of decorum prior to speaking. Each speaker shall identify him or herself and state his or her current address. Each speaker shall speak only to the merits of the proposed zoning ordinance under consideration, shall address remarks only to the commission, and shall refrain from making personal attacks on any other speaker. The presiding officer may refuse a speaker the right to continue if, after first being cautioned, the speaker continues to violate the rules of decorum. Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard our rules for public hearing. Thank you. Commissioners, can I get a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we, that we open the public hearing.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we open the public hearing. All of those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hearing none. Public hearing is now open. Director Smith, case number one, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, case number one, it's a new business. Case number one, P2025V-001-03, and case number P2024U-001-10. The applicant is Gray Star, John Hobart. The property is located at Zero Welcome Mall Road. The applicant has requested a use permit to develop 935,233.2 square feet approximately in an area with two warehouse distribution center buildings totaling approximately 219 square feet in area. In the light industrial I-1 zoning district with a concurrent variance from section 10-2079D to allow development within one mile distance required from residential. Case type is a use permit with a concurrent variance.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? You may come forward and present, please. Name and address. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair and Council Commissioners. My name is John Hobart with Gray Star. My address is 1775 Peachtree Street, Atlanta. I come here tonight with a special use permit request with a concurrent variance. This is to develop South Meadow Business Center. While the address listed on the agenda is Zero Welcome Mall Road, I wanted to point out that it is on South Meadow East Parkway. Welcome Mall Road is just what's listed on the tax record, so it is off of Welcome Mall slash Ben Hill on South Meadow East Parkway. This is the table contents, but it also gives a good aerial of the site. You can see South Meadow East Parkway is the, the road that kind of runs along the front of the property there. This is a dead-end road containing nothing but warehouses on it. There's a warehouse in every direction from the property. And this road, South Meadow East Parkway, is part of South Meadow, South Meadow Owners Association, which is the Owners Association for the existing industrial park. South Meadow Business Center is surrounded entirely by other similar developments and is not the closest of its type to any residential home in the area. As such, its presence is consistent with the surrounding environment, ensuring minimal impact on nearby residential properties. I did want to point out that while the variance is a variance to allow for a warehouse to be built within 1,000 feet, or, sorry, within one mile of a residential property as the crow flies, there is not a single parcel of land in the City of East Point that meets that requirement of being 1,000 feet, or one mile, excuse me, as the crow flies from a residential property. So this is not a unique situation for our parcel of land. It is true for every parcel of land in the City of East Point. So the surround, the site and surrounding area, as you, you know, you would take a right out of our development because taking a left would be to a dead-end road. So take a right, you come up to the stop sign that's highlighted on the screen. It directs all trucks to the left. As you progress, if you were to go right, as you progress down the road, there's two more signs indicating no truck traffic and no through trucks. This is important because this is where the majority of any residential homes would be leaving our site. And, and as you take a left out of the property, you would then, you know, bear right onto Camp Creek and continue on to the interstate most likely. A few of the development benefits, the current use of this is vacant land. This property was developed, the, the land was developed to build a warehouse back in 2018. It was granted, it was, it was already zoned industrial like it still is today. At that time, a special use permit was not required to build warehouse. So that project was granted a land disturbance permit to build that warehouse, but the developer chose not to move forward and ended up selling the land to a group called Reyes Holdings, who owns and occupies the building next door to us today. This currently, this property currently contributes $6,450 a year on average to the City of East Point, as well as $2,480 to Airport West CID via annual property taxes under its current uses of vacant land. By reaching its highest and best use of a warehouse development, this development has the potential to generate over $100,000 annually, a staggering 1,100% increase. Employment, obviously, our intent is to lease this building to local businesses to create well-paying jobs. While you may, you know, think of, well, I'll get to that on the next slide anyways. Sales tag generation, just, you know, providing more folks in the area to visit local businesses and provide business and taxes to those businesses. As I mentioned, this South Meadow Business Center is part of a current association governed by covenants and restrictions that carefully limit its permissible uses. Those include not allowing any uses that material increase the traffic, create vibrations, noise, odor, or other adverse effects beyond the boundary of the site, create a substantial likelihood of waste, constitute any dangerous or unsafe use, or involve the generation, treatment, storage, or disposal of hazardous substances. So this list is fairly all-encompassing of any, any concerns one might have with a warehouse use, and the association that governs this property does not allow any of these uses. Target businesses, you know, most of, most of the warehouses you may be familiar with around that Camp Creek business area, Camp Creek Business Center area are, are in the 300,000 to 600,000 square foot range, significantly larger than our buildings. We plan to build two buildings, one 85,000 square feet, one 135,000 square feet. And we're really targeting multiple businesses in the 20,000 to 40,000 square foot range, where in the industrial world, those would really qualify as small businesses. Some examples in the area I've listed here, but they're, they're just really not traditional, like, large truck user industrials, users when you get down to these 20,000 to 40,000 square foot spaces. Most of the time, you'll see box trucks over 18-wheelers. I mean, we, you still may see 18-wheelers, but that's not the, the main source of traffic for the, for the type of development we're targeting. I've, I've shown some examples of similar businesses in the area. These are immediately in our surrounding area. You can see the heavy automobile parking for the employees that work in those spaces, and then the truck courts of those buildings that, that are essentially vacant. The truck traffic is just minimal. You know, you see a couple of trucks in and out a day, but it's not like a, a heavy in and out. We have performed some proactive site impact studies, one being a traffic study with our traffic engineer, Kimberly Horn, which determined the maximum potential traffic impact, which is taking, you know, if the maximum amount of trucks and cars for any warehouse of this size were to traverse over a 24-hour period, it was determined to be of low impact to the surrounding area. We also conducted a noise study, and it indicated that any noise generated from this facility would, would be below the kind of maximum allowed decibels as it relates to the surrounding existing uses. So, you know, my job is, is I'm an industrial developer, and, you know, we, we're very aware of community drawback to industrial development. And so when we look for a site, we look at for a site that is zoned industrial and that is surrounded only by other industrial properties. And that is this property to a T. There's nothing that touches this site that isn't another warehouse or industrial zone land. The reason for our special use permit is because warehouse was stripped out of industrial zoning as an allowed use. So that's why we're here. It's not for a rezone, it's for a special use permit. It is currently zoned I-1, which is the industrial district, and according to the East Point Code, the intent of this section, I-1, is to provide areas within the city for the manufacture, storage, sale, and distribution of goods and the conduct of related commercial and industrial activities, which is exactly what we intend our development for. The I-1 district is comprised of existing industrial areas that are located on or have ready access to major thoroughfare, thoroughfares, and/or rail facilities, and are well-adapted to industrial development, and are not objectionable by reasons of dust, odor, noise, traffic safety, or congestion. And the last thing I'll mention is while this is a special use permit, we are not here trying to tell you what the exact use or user or tenant of our facility will be because we don't know. We are building this speculatively, which means we'll build it and then go find a tenant. But the special use permit is for the land use, which we are trying to allow the land use of warehouse on this property. So I'll pause there, reserve my right for rebuttal with any remaining time, and again, thank you for having me and dedicating some of your night this evening to hear my case.
Mr. Hobart, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that is in favor of the variance on this particular case? Anyone in favor of?
Madam Chair, let me just correct one thing. The city staff did advertise both the use permit and the variance. So both of those are before you, and you can hear from the public on both.
Okay.
It's-
Okay. Is there anyone here in favor of the concurrent variance on this property, or this project? Anyone in favor of? Is there anyone that's not in favor of? You may come forward. Anyone that's not? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Tom Wardlow. I live at 13-
I live at 1301 Mercer in the city of East Point. My desire on this is that you consider, a short time back in this current calendar year, this proposal came up before the city council, and a number of residents came and said, "No, we do not want this. We think there is already more truck traffic, in spite of all of the signs, than is good for us with our residential areas." Now, I hear a connection to residential properties, but the people who came and said no were the actual residents who live there and will be most impacted by it. And so I'm, while I'm not one of those people, I was here to hear their objection for the city council, and I would like you to consider that the residents are opposed to this in part because of the increased traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in opposition to this project? You may state your name and address.
Good evening, military, 2855 Seven Road. And I would say the same things, Mr. Tom. I was here also to hear the voices of the residents. We don't need any more warehouses, and it is near residential areas. And I heard the applicant saying that, you know, no loud trucks. Of course there's going to be loud trucks, and of course you got other warehouses up there, it's going, they all going to impact the whole community. The residents was here, and they spoke out to you guys, and I'm speaking. I don't live in that area, but I am a part of East Point. I see the big trucks. I live by Walmart with the big trucks. The resident says no, and I think you guys, as you sit there, you guys can also vote the same way. They don't want that in their community. They've been there for years. So too many warehouses, we have too many warehouses in that section. So I'm asking you guys, I'm telling you guys to vote no, because I vote no. The residents put their plea into you guys, and don't let them come and destroy a neighbor that had been there for years, people that have been there for 60 and 70 years. Let them live in peace. No warehouses in that area. So I vote no to the variances and to everything else that comply with that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else against? Come forward, please, and state your name and address.
Thank you for hosting tonight and just kind of hearing from us. My name is Andrea Caldwell. Address 4328 Savannah Walk, or Savannah Lane in the Savannah Walk community. I'm here because, one, I've lived in this community for 15 years. I purchased my home here about 15 years ago. I'm about maybe a mile and a half away from this project. And so I'm coming to you because I am someone that actually cares about this neighborhood, and I care about where the neighborhood is also headed. This meeting, and then also I attended the last virtual meeting where we heard about the warehouse project. And very much like how he said before, there are, there are other warehouses in this area, so this isn't something that we're unfamiliar with. But for someone who's lived here for 15 years, we're not happy with it. You know, they have the storage facility, they have McDonald's, they have the facility right behind where they're planning to build this that appears to be vacant a lot of the times, but we're not getting any benefit from these facilities coming into this area and being so close to, to our home. And that's very concerning for me. I made an investment in this area. So, you know, for me, I'm also curious about, you know, if this building were to come, what does it mean for us? What does it bring to our neighborhood? You know, I think a little bit more of this neighborhood. I think that we deserve more than just trucks. I think we deserve more than just loading docks. I think we need a space that brings us together, you know, coffee shops, restaurants, you know, community spaces, something that actually reflects the people that live within a mile of this place. I personally, you know, have experienced everything that's gone on with Microsoft, being right down the street from Microsoft. I've seen firsthand what it looks like when developments come to this area without community involvement. You know, this project, or the Microsoft project, was approved before proactively engaging with the community and hearing from the community to see what it is we want or needed. And, you know, as a result, it, it took for me coming out of my own house, I've, I've been here for 15 years, and I haven't attended as many meetings as I have since that Microsoft project came. But it took for me and the community to come back and push back and, and, you know, and try to secure anything that we could. And luckily, retroactively, Microsoft did provide things like sidewalks. They promised to build a small park for us. But the building of Microsoft, we experienced daily blast for months. It was uncomfortable. I work from home. It's uncomfortable to be in your home and not even know that these blasts are coming. And as a result, Microsoft is paying out claims right now to people that live in this neighborhood. I think it's the right time for us to try to come up with a proactive approach. We've been very reactive, and the community doesn't want to stand for that. I've learned that East Point has some proactive measures, like a community benefit agreement policy that's put in place specifically for these type of situations where private developers that are coming to this area with warehouses will come here with developments that also work for us as the community. You know, I think about things like road maintenance funds. We've talked about it, and we've seen pictures of, yes, the trucks won't be going down the roads that they can't, Ben Hill Road, because they'll be ticketed. But we all share a common space in how we get to Camp Creek. And there's a drastic difference in driving on Welcome Mall Road versus Ben Hill Road. Where those trucks are, they tear up the roads. And it's not intentional, so I understand that, but it's something that actually happens. So putting, proactively putting funds to the side, so when the road tears because of the trucks, they can easily and quickly come out and repair it. You know, as they're going to be building on this land, the same way that Microsoft built on the land right next door to them, blasting and the things that's needed in order to build, you know, a structure of this size, you know, providing assistance to the neighborhoods and the schools, things that will allow us to maybe soundproof our homes or whatever the case may be, but just being proactive when it comes to that.
Madam Chair, sorry to interrupt, but that's time.
Thank you.
Was that 15 minutes?
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I did have some questions, though. I didn't know, I thought it was 15 minutes for what you all said.
It's for the entire opposition.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Attorney Wiggins, is that the complete time that we have allotted?
Yes, let the board of motion
Okay.
Whatever time you extend for opposition, you have to extend for those who
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioners, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend the time.
Second.
But, wait a minute, Madam Chair.
How much time?
Five minutes, then.
Questions?
Second.
Were there any, before we extended, I wanted to know were there any additional residents that wanted to be heard, in case we need it longer than five minutes?
We, we will get to ask that once the motion has been completed.
Understood.
And of course, we have to go to the, we have to give the same amount of time to those that are in support of it as well. Does that answer your question? Does that answer your question? Okay, thank you. All those in favor to extend the time, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Hear and none. The time will be extended, five minutes for support and those that are against. Do we have anyone in, that is in support? We'll go there first. Do we have anyone else that is in support of the project?
So the five minutes, can we add any rebuttal?
Okay.
Probably not for her. She hasn't called a second.
But you will get an additional five minutes. Is there anyone in support of? And if not, is there anyone that wants to come up in opposition to? Thank you. And if you don't mind for the record, just repeat your name again.
Andrea Caldwell. Okay, so I'll get to the questions. What I wanted to know today is, has the city asked for a community benefit beyond taxes and jobs? Because I do believe any company that comes to East Point should be paying taxes. And jobs, it's, it's just hard to track the long-term impact of jobs. So wanted to know, has the city asked for anything beyond that? Does the company, Gray Star, have plans for a shared space? Green areas, local restaurants, community use type facilities? Most important question, do they feel it's an unreasonable request to create a community benefit agreement, something that offers a tangible return for the community? And then finally, just kind of have, after hearing everybody's feedback, you know, what are the next steps that Gray Star will take to ensure that this project strengthens our community versus putting a strain on it? That's it.
Does that complete your rebuttal and your questions?
Yes.
Thank you. You can
Is there anyone else that wants to rebut the project?
Thank you. Hear and none. Attorney Wiggins, the questions that were asked?
We don't answer questions.
I know the commissioners cannot. Is there anything that can be forwarded on?
It's up to the applicant if he wants to answer.
Thank you.
But we don't address that in his rebuttal, but the commissioner doesn't answer Exactly.
So we can hear now from, you want to continue with your opposition and your presentation?
Hey, John Hobart, Gray Star, back. So one thing I didn't mention about the site that you're seeing outlined in white here is, I did mention that it was previously kind of pre-graded and infrastructure put in place for basically the exact warehouse development that we're planning to build. So the site works already done. Dissimilar to the project next door, highlighted in yellow, there will be no blasting, the site works already done, we'll just be building a building essentially. There have been some pine trees that have grown on the property over time, so we'll be, you know, clearing those. But in terms of blasting, the site is already graded and clear, or graded and level, so there will be no blasting in terms of noise. You know, I do, I do hear the concerns about traffic, and I understand those. We, we do believe our traffic will be minimal compared to other similar developments in the area. I mean, you can see the Dick's Sporting Goods, Duke Realty there on the screen, that's, you know, three to four times larger than what we plan to build. But I did want to just reiterate the existing code of the I-1 district, which is what our property is zoned, states that projects are not objectionable by reasons of dust, odor, noise, traffic safety, or traffic congestion. So those, those objections are by East Point's code not allowed. I'll also respond to, forgive me for forgetting your name, but in terms of community, community benefits, you know, currently our site plan kind of takes up the whole area of our parcel of land, when you look at the buildings, the parking, and kind of retention ponds and landscape and everything like that. You know, I don't think anyone wants a playground on our warehouse parcel, but if there's, you know, this is the first ask I've heard from the community. Some of you may remember, I've, I've been at this since December, and we, we're now coming back through with the variance attached. So we've had a lot of conversation, and I haven't had an ask for kind of a public benefit agreement yet. But I don't know what that would be on our property. If there's, if there's ideas for a way we could contribute to the community in, in another area of town, then I'm open to discussing. But in terms of on our property, I think part of the reason we believe that this property is only suited for industrial development, and if not granted, this special use permit will most likely be, never be developed into anything else, is because it is pre-graded for industrial development, it is on a dead end road that only contains industrial development, it's just, and there's no traffic, there's, it's a dead end road, so there's no traffic that passes by this parcel, which, which would eliminate like any desire for a retail developer to develop any retail type use, because there's no traffic, not to mention it's next door and surrounded by warehouses. Gray Star, some of you may know, is, is a very large multifamily developer, is, is kind of our, our main business. We got into industrial five years ago or so. And, you know, so we've, we have looked at this property with a, with a residential lens, and, you know, just, it's not suited for residential development, given the fact that it's surrounded by existing warehouse. So, you know, in my professional opinion, as a real estate developer, I truly believe that warehouse is the highest and best and really only use for this land moving forward, and that if it is not granted a special use permit, it will remain an undeveloped parcel of land with minimal tax impact to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have heard from the applicant, and you have heard from the community?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
A second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we close the public hearing on case P-2025 Victor dash 001 dash 03, and P-2024U dash 001 dash 10. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposes? Hear and none. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Director Smith, the next case, please.
You guys need to now take up the special use permit and the current variance.
To vote on it.
Sorry, so a recommendation
To be made to City Council.
That's right. So the recommendation Staff has to give us the recommendation before we can close it. So Director Smith, your recommendation, please.
Yes, in reference to case number P-2024U dash 001 dash 010, and case number In reference to case numbers P-2025V dash 00103, and case number P-2024U dash 00110, the applicant is Gray Star, John Hobart. The property is located at Zero Welcome Mall Road. The zoning is I-1 zoning district, which is our light industrial district, and the applicant is requesting a use permit to develop 21 plus or minus acres for two warehouse distribution center buildings totaling approximately 219,090 square feet in area. And it is a concurrent variance. The zoning map, as you see, is I-1. And this is a depiction of the current site, what you see highlighted in red What you see highlighted in red with the red star, that is the site at hand. The green circles depict the residential uses surrounding the property. And there are quite a few. And in that picture, you also see the white rectangle. White tops are existing warehouses in the area as well. This is a depiction of the distances, which is associated with the variance portion pursuant to Section 10 dash 2079D to allow development within one mile distance from residential properties. This is a depiction, it gives you proximity distances from residential within the area. If you could see on the map, you see there are residences within 1,014, 888 square feet in area. There are depictions of residential properties being approximately 2,800 feet from this site and so on and so on. It's 1,900 square feet, 3,000, 1,800 square feet away, night, not square feet, not square feet in area, but just square, square miles in area. So, and then 1,900 feet away, there are depictions of 2,662 and so on and so forth. As we know, a mile is approximately 5,000, 5,280 feet approximately. And so, you see there's plethora of distances that is less than a mile away. So, we just wanted to let you see that in a picture. This is a map of our comprehensive plan land use map. And it's showing that this area is an industrial sub-area two. And within the sub-area two of our comprehensive plan, it calls for industrial and business park in its vision. And I'll read a couple of excerpts so we can get familiar with what the intent is for this area. Portions of it states that many new users of industrial are not customarily industrial activities, but those that require industrial zone land are lower rent like startups and entrepreneurial businesses. So, that's the vision for sub-area two. Some of the goals of sub-area two is to promote adaptive reuse and redevelopment of vacant and underutilized industrial properties to increase possibilities for introducing modern industrial uses to the area. Also, one of the goals of the sub-area two land use category is to encourage light industrial and office park uses in industrial areas in close proximity to residential uses in alignment with C-2 and MXCI zoned, zoning classification and permitted uses. Also, some of the goals for sub-area two is to promote incentives for targeted business types like film, film areas as well as other areas of sub-area two. And the last goal that we'd like to highlight is that evaluating truck routes and consider creating designated truck routes prohibiting truck traffic and other roads to reduce the impact to the surrounding neighborhood. As you see, saw on some of the maps that we showed, it is a varying contrast of residential right next to the industrial. And in conclusion, the staff has recommended denial of the use permit and variance application for the warehouse and distribution center in the light industrial district due to uncertainties about detailed traffic study information, potential environmental justice impacts such as lights and noise, tractor-trailer traffic, air quality and water amongst some of the environmental justice impacts that could happen in reference to the surrounding residential community. Also, there are concerns about sidewalks accessibility and frontage, the entryway into the development, driveway spaces, lot coverage proposals and internal sidewalk coverage. The site is not in compliance with Section 10 dash 2079D, which is to allow these type of uses within one distant mile of residential. So, this site is well within the mile and so therefore it's not in compliance with that section of the code. And staff further recommends denial of this. But what we'd like to say, if it is the board's wish to recommend approval, we do have a set of conditions that we've come up with and I'll read those into record. But I do want to reiterate that it is a recommendation for denial. However, in some instances, we are, were able to provide or obtain feedback from council in reference to this item because it came before as a use permit. So, we were able to get feedback and with that feedback, we were able to come up with conditions if it is the will of this body as well as council. So, we're going to read those into the record. The first condition to develop, development is to provide five-foot sidewalks at the back of the curb along the entire property frontage. Condition number two, development is to provide ADA ramps and related striping associated with pedestrian crossroads at proposed driveways. Condition number three, development is to provide a minimum radii of 35 feet at the back of the curb on all proposed driveways. Condition number four, development is to design ingress and egress to the site to meet minimum driveway spacing of 125 feet. Condition number five, development is to be designed in such a way to maximize lot coverage for the site, not to exceed the industry standard of 70% for commercial industrial projects. Condition number six, development is to provide connectivity from proposed sidewalk at the street to the proposed buildings. Condition number seven, development is to provide a traffic study. Condition number eight, the developer is to adhere to Section 10 dash 2067 Warehouse Industrial District. Section C for procedures is, excuse me, Section D Development Standards, Community Benefits Through Development Agreement. And that's the, and that's the conclusion of our recommendations in reference to. I want to go back to the next slide. It just basically lists the procedures for the, for the warehouse industrial district, which we notated as Section C, if you could go back. Section C, D, E, F, and H. And as you see there, there is Section H, which encompasses community benefits agreement. And that's the conclusion of our, our report.
Thank you, Director Smith. Commissioners, you have heard from staff. What is your pleasure?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we recommend approval of the use permit with the concurrents variance, including the conditions that were stated by the director.
Do I hear a second? Thank you. Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. All of those, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposes? Can I get a roll call, please? In favor of?
Commissioner Mark Fields.
The motion on course to approve with conditions?
No.
Commissioner Melanie Stiles.
I approve with conditions.
Commissioner Watson.
Deny.
Commissioner Miller.
Approve with conditions, aye.
Commissioner Presley.
Deny.
Commissioner Eleanor Anderson.
Approve with conditions.
Commissioner Joseph Fields. Commissioner Keisha Chapman.
Deny.
Chairman, oh. Chairman Love. Deny.
So, it fails because five were made to the motion to approve with conditions for a variance. It will move to City Council.
Okay, so we have a denial. It failed, I'm sorry, it failed, so it would just move forward to City Council. Thank you. Okay, we have a second case on new business. Director Smith?
Yes, under new business, case number two. Case number P-202-5RZ dash 001 dash 03. Applicant is Fuse Design Studio Timothy Helms. Property is located at 3380 Bachelor Street. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from R-1A, our urban residential zoning district, to RT, our residential townhouse district with a concurrent variance to reduce the minimum lot area from 3,000 square feet in area to 2,148 square feet in area. Case type is a rezoning with a variance.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm moved to open the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and properly second that we open the public hearing. All of those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Hearing none. The public hearing is open on case number P-202-5RZ dash 001 dash 03. The applicant may come forward, name and address, please.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Timothy Helms. I'm with Fuse Design Studio. The address is 374 Haskell Road Northwest, Atlanta, Georgia, 3009. I am here today, do we have the presentation? If not, I have it on a flash drive as well. Yes. Let's see. There you are. I'll wait until we plug in. Yes, the second one, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we are here tonight to discuss the property at 3380 Bachelor Street in East Point, Georgia. That is at the intersection of Bachelor Street and Walker Avenue. As a R-1A, as previously stated, we're coming to, for a variance for RT, residential townhome. If we go to the next slide, this is the current survey of the property where you can see there is a single-family one-story home with an accessory dwelling unit in the back. The single-family home is currently occupied. The accessory dwelling unit is not occupied and not able to be occupied currently. And next slide. This is the proposed site plan and landscape plan. The proposed site plan, you can see there are two types of units with two buildings each, a mirror copy of each other. The plan for the site would be to heavy, heavily landscape the site. There's a park to the west of the property and we want to kind of draw from, draw inspiration from that park and bring some of those elements into the actual site. You can see that on the site plan, all of the drive entries are on Walker Ave, even though the, the primary address is on Bachelor Street. We do have an elevation that we'll show, share later of both of those streets. Again, some of the, what you can see here again in the bottom view of the site, the individual lots, as we're also requesting the variance to reduce from 3,000 square feet to 2,148 square feet, which is a 29% reduction. There are some codes that reference doing certain things to the property, providing certain amounts of brick facade, certain amounts of heavy landscape, bench seating that will allow us to either get a percentage of that granted back to us. We would be able to get 5%, but that still wouldn't put us in that range to be able to reduce the, each of the lots down to what they would need to be. If we could go to the next sheet. These are just some very schematic level. I would, you know, rely on that, that word heavy schematic because these are just some first rounds of, of what the units would look like. So, this would be a one unit and then the next slide would show us a two unit. These two units would be put together to form one of the structures, which would then be mirrored. And if we go to the next plan, you can see the elevations here. Unit A1 on the left, A2 in the middle, and then the mirror copy of that as well as some of this, the landscape. So, on the bottom, you're seeing the elevation, very schematic again. Level is on Walker, yeah, Walker Ave. And then on the top, you're seeing Bachelor Street. Next slide. These are some inspiration images. On the bottom right, I'm going to really focus on that. We've received some comments about parking on the parking pads that we've shown on the site plan. And what we would like to propose is essentially recessing the bottom level to allow two parking spaces on the property for each of the townhomes. So, not only would the tenant be able to get two vehicles into the garage, they would also be able to have two guests. That would allow us to keep the streets clean and free of vehicles for, you know, any emergency vehicles, but also for other pedestrians in neighborhood, neighboring properties. And then some of the other aesthetics of the building, again, just showing we, we intend to provide a heavy amount of brick, brick facades, craftsman style and nature, keeping with the traditional, with the traditional neighborhood that we see, the single-family, which most, most, most of the existing single-family homes are one and a half to two-story homes. We really feel that this would be a good transition from the six-story hotels to our east and to our south to this three-story townhome, then to a one and a half, two-story home or the park to our west. We really feel that this is a very urban transition that you would typically see. Our next slide. Again, these are some of the properties that are spoken about. So, I'll start on the very far, the bottom right-hand corner. That is a, kind of a business and warehouse. That's, I think it's a car repair that's there. And then if you go up, you see that six-story hotel that we were talking about. That's, that's the one to our south. And then if you go over to the left, that is actually the park that we're referencing. So, you can see there are playground equipment, but it's also heavy landscape on that park as well. And then up above the park is that other six-story hotel that is to our right. So, to our, our east. All the other homes are the one and a half, two-story homes that we're referencing in the neighborhood. The only other thing I'd say about the current property is that if it was to be redeveloped currently, I know there's been some comments also in our previous meetings about keeping historic houses and, and single-family homes. If the plan was to redevelop it as a single-family home, more than likely, this home would be torn down entirety to build a new, brand-new home. So, there would probably be no, no elements of that single-family home that's there, that would exist. Nor do we feel any of those elements on that home are special or unique or historic or in value. And I'll leave it there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in support of this project? Anyone here in support? Is there anyone here that is in opposition to the project? Anyone here? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Tom Wardlow. I live at 1301 Mercer Avenue. I live at 1301 Mercer Avenue. That is in Eagan Park, the same as this proposed building. I would call your attention to several mentions to the current housing, one, one and a half stories. This is clearly, as a residence-- not a hotel-- but as a residence, is really out of the character of Eagan Park. Now, five years ago, I moved to East Point, and I moved to Eagan Park because it was a nice, quiet neighborhood, nice little houses, houses I could afford. And I'm kind of puzzled by the amount of rentals that we have, and in particular, the lack of city's enforcement of short-term residence requirements. That is, people who have-- I don't even know-- the companies that rent out a house for a day or up to 30 days. We are not enforcing that as a city. It's unfortunate, it's on the books, but we're not. And that is my other concern here. These properties would lend themselves to becoming rental units, so I would propose that covenants for building on the property require that it be owner-occupied only. The issue of parking-- I'm glad he brought that-- our gentleman brought that up about parking off-street. He said there were two spaces for owners and two for visitors. I'm assuming that was the driveways. And we do have other buildings, but we don't have anything like this in Eagan Park. There is no three-story building in Eagan Park. There is no condominium building. It's all individual residences. So I am opposed to changing the zoning from R1A to RT. I think that's inappropriate, and I definitely think the variance to reduce minimum lot size is out of order. None of these are particularly large lots anyway, so we're talking about setting a precedent of even smaller lot sizes, and I am opposed to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that is in opposition to the project? Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Brooks, and I'm at 1311 Mercer Avenue in Eagan Park. And I'm opposed to this building, townhomes there. One, if you've been in Eagan Park, the streets are very narrow. Parking on one side of the street very much allows only another car to go down the street. If another car's coming from the opposite direction, you can't get down the street. So by adding four homes or four townhomes there would cause major traffic issues, I'm afraid, at that corner at the park. I've been down that road several times, and when you turn onto Bachelor, sometimes there's cars coming. They don't go on the right side of the street. They're driving down the middle of the street because the road is so narrow. So I'm opposed to that, plus it would take away the structure or the-- the character of the neighborhood. We are small family homes. We are not condominiums. We don't have a whole lot of that kind of structure in our neighborhood. I just think that it would bring other issues and other problems to our neighborhood, so I'm against it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in opposition to the project? Good evening. State your name and address.
Good evening. We Terry, 2855 Seven Road. And I agree with the residents of Eagan Park. I have walked that area on Cambridge. When you're coming down Cambridge and Bachelor, the roads are very, very narrow. The hotels in the back, you've got trees that's actually planted on the other side of the sidewalk. The complaint with the residents there is that when a big truck-- because you have the hotels, all those big trucks coming up the street-- there's not enough room. There is not enough room there, the trees in the way. But all the big hotels, Hallian and Faber, all them hotels, to put a condo or whatever there, it wouldn't be-- wouldn't be right. All the traffic, the streets in there, Walker-- when you're coming down Walker, you have to absolutely stop in order for the car or truck to come up. When you're going down Bachelor, it's the same. So to put those condominiums or townhouses, whatever y'all call them, that would ruin the neighborhood. It's a very, very old neighborhood, very nice, very compact. They don't have much yard, but they do have somewhere to park their cars. But he's putting two cars, the garages. I just don't think that would fit in the neighborhood, and I don't think the residents there would like that in the neighborhood. You're bringing these investors in to ruin a neighborhood that's been there for years. They don't need that in their community. Like I said, I walked them, and Eagan Park is a very small park. We just finished that. But the streets are too narrow for those condos. Put a house there, just put a regular house there. But those condos or townhouses, whatever y'all want to call them, that's not going to work, and I'm against it. I'm not for it. Like I said, I've walked it. Have you guys been that way? Have you walked that way? Have you seen it? Have you been in the neighborhood? Then you may make that. But for somebody to come in and look at a neighborhood and don't even know what they're actually looking at, doesn't stay there, I say no to it. This community here has come a long, long way. A long way. You've got all them hotels down there. That's enough right there. I say no to it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that is in opposition? Yes, please come down. State your name and address.
Name is Sam Brown. I'm at 1311 Mercer Avenue. I oppose this. I used to live in a city with townhomes. The reason why I moved to Eagan Park is a community, a small community, that we look out for each other. I like that it was small homes. No one's on-- it's a small area, but everyone's not on top of each other. Having condos is like being back in the city. And where we live at, it's not the city. It's small. It's a community. And that's what we want, instead of big buildings everywhere. Small home, that'd be nice, right there, but condos, no. So I oppose that. Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in opposition to the project? Hearing none, seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second that the public hearing is now closed on project All of those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Staff, Director Smith, your recommendation, please.
Yes, in reference to this item, item number P-2025-RZ-001-03. Property located at 3380 Bachelor Street. The case type is a rezoning with a concurrent variance, and the applicant is Fuse Design Studio Timothy Helms. The current zoning at the property is R1A, which is our Urban Residential Zoning District. The applicant has requested a rezoning from R1A to RT, our Residential Townhome Zoning District, with a concurrent variance to reduce the minimum lot area from 3,000 square feet to 2,148 square feet. The property itself is approximately 0.1974 plus or minus acres, which is about 20% of an acre. An acre being 43,560 square feet. As stated, the current zoning map shows it as R1A. On the previous slide and this-- the next slide is the land use map designation, which has this property as traditional neighborhood. And our staff recommendation is a denial of the rezoning and the variance request to rezone the property from R1A to RT. The concurrent variance with the reduction in the minimum lot area. The proposed zoning application does not conform to and it's not compatible with the comprehensive plan traditional neighborhood land use category. The future plans for this area is to protect historic nature, single-family homes, which is the current land use on this property. It's also to provide for jobs and economic development opportunities for the city residents and to restore traditional pedestrian-scale character and to emphasize high-quality design and standards in the building materials. We emphasize the protect historic nature of single-family homes in the community. As we did an assessment on this-- on this application, we were torn because it did highlight some of the aspects of what we're looking for in traditional neighborhood. But unfortunately, we're here to protect the fabric of the community as it is standing today, and so we did have to go ahead and recommend a denial on the petition for the rezoning, as well as the concurrent variance.
Thank you, Director Smith. Commissioners, you have heard from staff. What is your recommend-- what is your pleasure on-- go ahead.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation from staff. Denial?
The recommendation being denied. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and properly second that on case number P-2025-RZ-001-03 through, denial. All of those in favor, let it be known by the--
Madam Chair. See if there's any discussion.
Oh, is there-- are there-- is there any discussion on this particular case?
Madam Chair? I'd like to-- I'd like to reiterate the fact that-- I'm sorry.
Yes, Commissioner?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'd like to reiterate the fact that going from residential urban to a townhome would be taxing on the community, the way I see the-- what's going on, the way I see the picture, based on--
The roadways.
Yeah, the roadways, anyway. And besides, to rezone, it's like spot zoning, you know? And the way I see it, it would be like this one particular project would be zoned for townhomes, when in fact, it's already in a residential urban area. It would be inappropriate. So that's one of the reasons I would-- I would not hesitate to the-- to deny the request. I'd just like to give some reasons for not doing this. And I think that a district is something that have ramifications into the future as well. Someone else, if it's-- if the area's zoned for townhomes, someone else can come and put some more townhomes in there next to it, and that would completely destroy the residential portion of the neighborhoods. So for those reasons, I would recommend denial as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Joseph Fields. Are there any other Commissioners that want to have a comment? Commissioner Presley?
Given the width of the street, I'm not even sure if it is one lane. It's pretty narrow from the map that was presented, but you've got to think in construction crews and people leaving for work in the morning or in the afternoon. Also, to my colleague's point, we don't want to set a precedent where anybody starts tearing down any other house that they don't want in-- you know, in 13 years from now, whether we're here or not, we would have set that precedent here tonight.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners? Seeing none. What do I hear from the Commissioners?
You are the motions for this video.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All of those in favor, let it be known, aye to deny.
Aye.
Opposes? Hearing none. The project is now denied from the Commissioners. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, this still goes to City Council to be the final offer.
Thank you. And next week will be-- will it go to-- to City Council next week?
No.
Do we have the date for the-- for the next meeting? For the applicants?
You got it in the book.
Yeah, it will be in May. So the next meeting date for the council people, I don't have the date. I don't know if Director Smith has it or not.
It's May the 12th and the 19th.
Thank you.
For City Council.
Thank you. So the next meeting for the applicants will be in May, and you will hear, or will they contact you directly?
It will be the second and third Monday of May.
Second and third Monday of May. Do we have any announcements from Commissioners? Any announcements? Commissioner Presley, is your light on? Okay, thank you. We do not have any announcements, and so from there, we will ask for--
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It has been motioned and properly second that the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
I need to--
I didn't finish--